First of all, this is sponsored by the City of Athens and the League of Women Voters. And many of you will recall back in February, we held a companion meeting. And that was an open microphone meeting in which everybody was invited to come in and say, "Here's my concern, here's something I'm interested in, I'd like to ask this question," and so on. So the primary focus this evening, first and foremost, is for the mayor and city administration to respond to those concerns raised back in February. And then, assuming that it's not 10 to 8, probably be far short of that, we are inviting you to ask any further questions that you wish, by way of a slip of paper and written word, and we'll have those screened a little bit, just so we don't have the same question asked five times. And also, I will sort of say tongue-in-cheek, so that, well, if your grammar is totally backwards, someone will strain it out before it gets handed to me and I start to read. So the purpose of that, that is to have someone make sure we have a question that can appropriately be tossed this way. And then, if we happen to have more time, it's not yet 10 to 8, then we thought we would give you a little dose of that open microphone for a couple of minutes. That may or may not occur, depends on how long the evening takes. And so, what I'd like to do right now then, is to introduce our mayor, the Honorable Paul Weil, Mayor Weil.
Thank you. First, I'd like to take the time, uh, thank you for coming. It's a beautiful evening, and I know there's lots of things to do out there from Ohio Brew Week onward. Um, let's see, I'd like you to use my staff. Uh, Ron Lucas over there, he's going to be taking notes. The Service Safety Director Paula Coran Mosley, he is the Deputy Service Safety Director, just to get his title right. Over there's Chief Pyle, of course, police. John Paskey, Director of Code Enforcement. Jennifer Diamond.
Jessica.
Jessica, sorry. Getting nervous. Uh, she's representing the Public Works, um, in place of Andy Stone. She's in charge of our projects, so she actually knows more about than I do. City Planner Paul Ogg over here. I see we have at least a couple of city council members. I see Chris Nysley, and I saw Jim Sands right there. Am I missing anybody else? And the reason why I mention this is these people represent you. Um, again, I'm going to cover some of the projects that have occurred up to date, some things that are happening and not happening. Um, I'm going to hope if anybody wants it correctly, they will pipe up and I'll know about it. Um, and then I'll try answering some of the questions that we had from February. Uh, some better than others, some not so well at all. Let's first cover some of the projects we have. As you probably noticed, you've tried to go and go and grow the street, it is closed. We're working on a slip after 10 to 20 years, depending on who you talk to. Um, we've been doing the sidewalk drainage from Fort near Madison, should be done by this fall, we're using local money. Columbus Circle Phase 2, that's where the nursing home is, the laurels of Columbus Road, that's also being worked on. I see they just put a news release out saying they're paving some, but it'll be closed entirely at that time. We're also doing a wastewater treatment plant energy efficiency upgrade, that should be done this year. That came from the Simulastimulus line, which we have to use up this year. In passing, I'll mention that we are going to do a total upgrade in the near future. I believe the cutoff date with, can we should do it in 2014? Okay, I'm looking at, I've just been there for the date on that. That's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $14 million project, so it's going to be a massive amount of, to improve our wastewater treatment. That's what's involved, and you want to know probably. Hopefully make it smell nicer, take the chemicals out in terms of purification system, make it, uh, better capacity and more efficient in terms of energy. Court speed infrastructure improvements, this project number 259, that's going to start, it's going to go past, originally we were trying to get it done by August, because this is a short summer, that's a rolling long, but we won't be able to do it, so completion will be after school is in, sometime in October. We'll try keeping it open as much as possible. This is to do the sewer line underneath, Storm Sewer?
That's correct.
Yes, Storm Sewer. Um, again, this is coming from some Public Works money, as well as our local match. And we'll also do some peripheral sidewalks on that. And I mention that because eventually we'll pave it over with bricks. Uh, Safe Route to School, we're going to be doing a sidewalk on Miller, this will be on the south side near Arts West, as well as some infill on South Shannon Street Avenue. And again, this is part of our third round of State Safe Route to School. We're actually in a place of trying to get the fourth round going as well. Waterline replacements, we had three of them on, three different projects on line at the start of the year, but because of budget constraints, we're going to do two of the three. The one that fell out of the cracks was, um, West Union. Uh, so that's going to be, we're going to try getting that done next year, I think.
2014.
2014, two years from now. The ones that are going to be done, of course, are Joneswood Terrace, Riverview, Ransin, Harris and McGuffey. These are waterline replacements. In fact, if anybody who lived on Ransin, I think they had a bus two nights ago, two nights ago. Um, and that's not the one on 56 that occurred last night. So we have infrastructure issues all the time, there's tenants' line trouble. So we keep ourselves working on that. Um, other projects that will not occur this year, but will occur next year is the Oxley Bridge, of course. That fell over budget and because of budget constraints, again, a short summer, so we're going to push that back till next year, 2013. Again, wastewater treatment facilities upgrade, and hopefully we'll get a Safe Route to School number four, which will be some sidewalk infill as well. Other projects further down the line, Richland South, we're trying to get some money for that, we put in application for that. It'll be fatal safety funds, that will be 2014.
2014, maybe 2015?
2014 and 2015, depending on the time. This is going from Dairy Lane to Canadaer. Uh, the issues, of course, there are, you know, the lanes, condition of the road, the condition of the sidewalks, hopefully we can put some bike lanes in there too. It's going to be tricky. Um, I assume we're going to have multiple meetings about this and how to make it work. We have lots of curve cuts there, plus a fast food place once at least a couple ways get in and fast. As well, we're constrained by coastal run, it's a flash flood zone. Uh, so we have, uh, we have, it's going to be tricky on that. Columbus Road Lancaster infrastructure, we're talking about 2013 on that?
Yes.
2013. I should let you have the mic.
Whatever you prefer.
This is, uh, again, this is an improvement of the infrastructure there. We'll use some public money on that, as well as some local match. As you know, the road is pretty choppy there, we've been fixing it, you can tell by the patches, but it's been patched multiple times. Some input we'll get from the public is how to set it up so we can actually have, make it a more complete street. I don't think sidewalks are any often, but probably will, like, like Burns Lake on Pomeroy Road, that was done seven years ago. And hopefully we'll get to the West Union waterline eventually, 2014. We're also trying to put some money in for a bikeway spur, Phase 2, this is by West Eight Street Park. Other activities, some that aren't as obvious. My team, we have an MOU, do you want to add something?
Just that we continue to work on our memorandum of understanding on different items with the higher universities.
That's actually where it is going. Um, we have signed a memorandum of understanding, this is part of the mix we did with our ladder truck, they contribute accordingly to all this to the purchase of our ladder truck, which we have, it's running. I'm sure you've seen it. Part of the memorandum of understanding is to deal with some of the issues that we always have, items that need to work out together, as well as take a benchmark of where we are now. One of the things you realize over time is that the school, the university and the city have been dancing for 200-plus years, some of those things that we have agreed to, not agreed to, worked out, get lost in the haze of history. Uh, so one of the reasons why the memorandum of understanding is put in place is that we have an idea of what we have now, what we've overlapped with, whether there's a mutual share, mutual use, understanding between the police forces and/or just easements from one porch in the city to the other. Um, and again, we're just, I was saying, this includes, of course, the Joint Police Advisory Commission, also we're talking about sharing some high-tier resources over time. Again, this has to make us a better, a better mix. What was interesting, I think, I went to the board trustees up to last week, only last week, they seemed to be pleased that I had my staff members, Paula, Chief Pyle there, discussing some of the interconnectedness between the city, both in terms of infrastructure as well as for safety services. They were seemed to be impressed with that, discussions with other universities that they don't really talk that much as, as much as we do, which is surprising. I thought our communication was good, I didn't know it was that fantastic. Other things, city council side, they, of course, have passed an ordinance establishing a commission for environmental sustainability, that's in their Valleywick, so if you have, I believe they're collecting names and going to establish that commission. I know council is, city council is also talking about putting a multi-house street party task force together, with the idea they'll put something in place with the students and have something ready by September, they hope. I don't know what it looks like, I'm leaving it up to them, this is how things work on that. Um, not to pick on the planner, but he's working on, of course, the Arts Park Recreation Master Plan. This is a survey, somebody probably got surveys out there on how we want to look and where we want to go with our recreation of parks and our art systems. We actually are trying to do it, we'll try doing that second round, public input, I believe, is the case. We have a new Arts Parks and Recreation advisory board, they're shaking themselves out there and doing some pretty good stuff. When I say stuff, I mean actually they're learning, they're new members, they've got fresh ideas and they're learning the rules. The plan is also working on Historic Preservation Ordinance, that's in the works right now someplace. Again, that's always a little iffy thing, because how do you, what history are we talking about, what place and time? So let me cover, and I think I wasted enough time on that, that's what's been going on, that's just part of what's going on. There's a lot of other things, as you know, I could cover quite a bit, and I'm sure I'm missing a few things. Um, am I missing anything? Okay. Speaker?
We could go on for a long time about our projects, but obviously we're busy.
Okay. Some things from items from February's town hall meeting, and these are the notes I wrote down. Ron took some good, curious notes, some I could address, some I can't. First one, I'll try some of the easy ones first, we'll get to the harder ones. That's the way it is. Some of the things that were brought up was local economy, food and otherwise, there were a couple speakers on that. What's interesting, of course, is that we do have a good local economy, local food economy in particular, we have 40 years of farmers market, we just celebrated that. We have a 30-mile meal program, which is actually partially this farmers market, as well as the, towards the convention bureau. An interesting combination that's been put together on that. They have an upcoming event, July 10th, for local food conference, I believe it's a, not Wolf of Home, where is it? I don't know where it's going to be, but stay tuned. What? Oh, you in, okay. Um, thank you Larry. There's Larry Payton back there, County Commissioner too, thank you, I'm glad you're, I forgot, I forgot to bring all the literature on that. Um, and again, this is really to push our local economy and our resiliency as a, as a community. Um, I know he probably will not be able to attend, but I was hoping to do that. Other things, of course, is that the non-food side of it, we have, of course, was mentioned by Mary Lee Powell at the last meeting concerning the CIC, Port Authority, Economic Development Council, where there's multiple organizations, incubators like the Innovation Center and ACM. I think the thrust of Leslie Schaller, who was talking about it in local industry at the time, was how to get local investment, and I don't think we've made any progress on that. I think that's, it's a difficult thing, how do we get people to invest in the local food economy? I know that we have the Innovation Center, we have the angel funds and the venture capitalists out there, they're mostly looking at high-tech items, TechGrow, the Third Frontier Groups, but the other part is a little bit more difficult. It's not glamorous, but it's very important. So I think that's something that's, we're a lot of work, there's no easy solution to it. Um, and I say that because I am actually the Chair of the Economic Development Council of Athens County One. I took over from Lenny Lyson, I remain as a member of the board. We look at how to work together with the university, county, the city, Hocking College, Nelsonville, various, uh, Innovation Center, various organizations on how to put this together, how to make it work for a region, how so we don't compete against each other that we have something open there. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that there's a study going on about arts and economics as well, which will be coming out. I don't have the numbers on it, but when, I can probably tell you all the information if you ask him on the side when he gets a chance. There will be a presentation on that, it's coming up soon.
July 9th at City Council, 10th in Nelsonville, 12th at Arts West for the Athens Public.
Did you get that? So the first one's going to be at Athens City Council presentation. Part of it there is that we source some preliminary data, it's very impressive how much money comes in from arts. And that's really just looking at nonprofits, it doesn't look at the artists out there, the solitary artists who's out there about doing stuff on his own. Millions of dollars. And I say that, I don't say that lightly, but it was, it's something I don't think about, being a full steamer, I'm still a steamer I am, but I recognize the fact that it is important. Um, so, okay, so Economic Development Council, we have revolving loan funds in place, we're trying to get those up and running more robustly. Um, and that's really all I'm going to cover on that, there's lots to cover on that, there's a lot more that needs to be done. We're always at the control of the external economy as well. And again, the university's on board, county's on board, and the city's on board, we're the major players, we recognize that, we're trying to work together and not stumble over each other's feet. And I think we're doing a fairly good job. Actually, we're also looking for a director too, I should plug that too. Todd Shelton, who's director, has moved on, and there's an opening right now for somebody who's charismatic and can get all these silos pulled together. Schools, I really might cover much of that. That was one of the things that came up at the last meeting in February, the closing of Chancy Elementary School, I believe it's turned into a daycare system right now, not having kids and not being part of the school system. When I say not being, it's a different body of government, in a different area. I have very little control over it. The best thing I can tell you guys is to support the local levels and get involved at the PTA or PTO level. Find out what's going on. Bike pedestrian issues, one of these issues, of course, was trying to get a crosswalk on Lowe's, I was approached last week, somebody said, "How can we get, you know, better crosswalks and pedestrian walks on East State Street?" It's a hard one. You widen it from three lanes to five lanes 10 years ago, and everybody drives quickly accordingly. So we are putting something in place, Lowe's.
They're, they're, we are installing pedestrian heads and pathways at each intersection along here. Some of them still need to be striped and some are still to be, Croakers is one that I just added to end.
Also to cover the pedestrian and bicycle area, again, we're still working on Safe Route to School, and so we're dropping at least $100,000 each year on that plus. You're surprised seeing the new stairways on Fort and the new stairways by West Elementary. This gives people, kids a chance to walk off the streets and away from school. We're also, City Council's also put legislation in place requiring bike racks in new apartment complexes, equivalent to what you see in terms of park requirements. So we now have a matching bike parking requirement that's built into our code. Um, let's see, we still haven't addressed the 24-hour parking, that's still ongoing, we'll keep looking at that. If you want to find out about the parking requirements, just go to the, it's probably Title 23, I believe, zoning code?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Other things, um, let's see, I think John Nass talked about natural areas, contingency areas. We're looking forward to, I've been told that the Clean Ohio Funds have been refunded, I'm hoping that we get involved in that. My hope there is that we can get in line with everybody else and add some green space. There's, there's always discussion of people who want to donate portions, but it has to be well done in terms of planning, what we want to see in our parks and our green spaces. Homelessness, these are two of the, homelessness, energy and fracking are the last three items I have here, and then we can take those questions. I hope you guys are already filling out questions right now. Um, and then I'll turn it over to anybody else I've missed, see if anybody else wants to say anything else, okay? I know you guys are just really jumping around. Homelessness, we had that town hall meeting last April, Won't You Be My Neighbor, it covered some of the aspects of both the stigma of homelessness, as well as mental illness. Uh, I know some of you attended, I think, I think there weren't any good answers, I think the discussion moved forward a little bit, but I think there's quite a bit more to go. Looking down the road, I realize that, you know, we've dealt with integrated services, it seems to be doing okay, I haven't heard any complaints. We've been having discussions with the university about upgrading their housing stock, the unknown, of course, is whether increased capacity, as well as quality. Some of the, some discussion in April 12th was, was how to deal with it, and I don't know if we got that far along. I know that there's limited resources out there, there's limited spaces for it, I wish I had better answers on that. I know, I, I'm aware my city planner had a conversation with some of the members of the Good Works Organization on terms of housing options. We're working on Habitat for Humanity Houses, still rolling forward, it seems to be taking longer than it should. I'm hoping that we can get more housing stock out there, it's not been working well. I know that also I'm having discussions with the, the Disabilities Commission, mostly because they're looking at the potential of how to make everything ADA, they recognize that we're all getting older. Well, we are. And, and the fact that, you know, the, the need for, for handicapped accessible buildings, handicapped friendly buildings, both homes and residences and apartments and businesses, how to make it a friendly for all of us, once we get older in our dawn age, which I'm getting there too. So, I'm not sure if I can tell you much more about that. I think the conversations that Paul Ogg had with Good Works, those are the housing options on what to change, whether addressed as a PUD, you know, planning development that is in the works right now, is approached in preliminary conversations for housing, not low-income housing, not homeless housing, but the fact is that there's an option that things have been discussed. The other one, of course, would be to go search out our three zones, which we had more of than anything else. I'm not sure, we haven't done anything with the rezoning on the Far East Side, which was in response to the integrated services. I think we're still sitting on that and working on it. I don't know how far we'll go along, because there's always, I think we're taking our time with this one, do it right. I can't speak to much more than that as a planning commission member. And that's all I'll say about it. There's not a lot of solutions on that, but as you say, it's a community problem. I never did get any feedback from Mr. Bolt, I think, or Bolton, Nelson Building wanting to put some kind of house in place. I'm hoping somebody will inform me of that, and that the conversation kept going after the last meeting. Since it's Nelsonville, I did, wanted to interrupt, I did in the way of it. Fracking and energy, start with, with energy addicts, because that's what I'm going to start with, most of my conversations about fracking and energy. The city, in terms of, two ways of getting energy, of course, is conservation and generating more. The city is starting Phase 2 of the Protection Energy Efficiency Program, I think we're committed, we haven't decided a full number yet, it's either 200,000 or 700,000, whichever way they go. This is to do energy improvements for our various buildings in the city, recognizing that that's the first thing we do, is our own buildings and lands. We're also reviewing our energy and vehicle needs, and mostly in control in context of budget savings. I mean, that's a good thing to do, but really in the long term, how do we preserve that stuff? On the fracking part, I've been to many, many meetings, I've seen many of you at the Wayne National Forest. I'm aware that, again, I'm to reiterate from February, we're 10 to 14 square miles in a 500-square-mile county. We're having conversations, I'm having regular conversations with other mayors who are concerned, even though they know they don't have control. We have very little control, state has 90 senate. The city council has, that has not stopped city council from adopting legislation, they amended the wellhead protection ordinances to, to prohibit drilling, gas well drilling, injection drilling, this is a wellhead protection area, knowing full well that it's really in the state's purview. I also, they also passed Resolution R 612 concerning the leasing and drilling, or rather an environmental impact statement, study being done before leasing at the Wayne National Forest. Likewise, I sent a letter, I sent several letters, asking for the same thing. I met with the supervisor, Ann Carey, I invited her to this meeting to see if she wanted to say a few things, she declined. I would suggest that you go and meet with her, talk to her. The concerns, of course, that are there, of course, is that as it gets further down to the leasing, it'll be harder to turn around. I think it's required that we do the studies, I think it's necessary that they do it, it's in our aquifer, it's upriver from us. We should be concerned. We should be concerned that they, that if there's damage on that, that we will pay the price, and we'll have to chase somebody down to get reimbursed, and in the meantime, we'll have to bathe that aboard bottles, I guess. I don't know what the answers are on that, I mean, I don't have an army, I have legislation, I have laws. We are pretty much fixed by it, I haven't read all the 150-plus pages of Senate Bill 315. I know they've modified some of the requirements. I know that the Wayne National Forest is holding off for the review of new information, I asked what exact new information they had, weren't really, you know, very detailed in it, I hate to say, so. That ensures all new information of interest. I gave them a paper, actually called The Ohio Naturalist from 1901. Interestingly enough, it has a story about Nick Corning, how the, a series of townships got together, drilled wells and ran their own gas well company, gas company. This is 1901, it's about 600 wells they put down there. The deepest one from the paper talks about 1,200 feet down, so that's 1,000 feet, so that's about fifth the way down to where the Utica is. On the other hand, it's interesting reading, because it's like, oh yeah, we cracked a well by throwing 20 cords of nitroclisone down. Doesn't sound like an exact silence to me. It's kind of disturbing, because I assume that they closed up the wells, but it's just throwing a few pieces of dirt down there too. I was trying to stress to Ms. Carey that there is a concern, that we don't know what's down there. I think State Representative Phillips, Debbie Phillips talked about that there should be a, before anything goes forward, we actually should be doing a good inventory of what the conditions of the old wells are, the ones from 1901, the ones pre-1901. I mean, it's a quaint paper, but it doesn't, it's not a benchmark. They talk about having wells drilled that are dry wells, that ones that just pulled up brine. They talked about how they just pulled the gas out, and when the gas is gone, the company dissolved. But 600 wells in three townships, that's a lot, and it's 100 years ago, plus years ago. So we don't know what's out there, we don't know what's down there, we don't know what will be fracked down there. It is a concern. I am very concerned, but it's frustrating, because I'm almost powerless to do anything. And I say the only power that I have is actually the noise I can make, the questions I can ask, and the, and the bodies like you that can get up there and say something. I think that's all I'm going to cover right now, so I guess I'll take questions, so we have plenty of time for answers. Unless, of course, one of my staff wants to say anything. Does anybody want to add something? I see a whole nod, it's here. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul, and I forgot to suggest a mechanism for getting your questions. If you have any written questions that we could pick up here, and let me, I have a couple. As soon as we get one or two that have been run through for granted, we can start on them, and all the rest of you are welcome to crank out some more questions, so. In just a moment, we'll see what the first one has to say. I don't think you can give us a self-. Okay. Here's the first question I'm handed, question on city schools. Is West Elementary scheduled to be closed, and if so, how can this be prevented? Well, I don't see too many school board members, but Paul, you're the elected official at this table, so naturally, I'll hand you the question.
Are these both the questions here?
No.
Okay.
Pardon me. Did you get that?
I could probably yell about this. Actually, I don't think it's going to be closed. I did, the last time I had a conversation with Mr. Martin, I think it was the day our graduation, and I was asking how things were going, and he looks tired, and I shouldn't say that, but he, you know, he's obviously got to deal with budget issues. As far as I know, they, it's not a question of closing that, because they, they do need the capacity, from what I understand. So as far as I know, it's not in the mix. But then again, I'm just on the outside, I don't have any kids, I live two blocks away from it, it looks like it's doing okay from my point of view, although school's out right now, so. And when school gets back in, please drive slowly down Central. Plus, you guys drive way too fast down Central. Questions?
Okay. Thank you. Don't go away. Will our Athens city and county water supply be tested for Tier Three or more chemicals before the first deep shale test well is drilled?
What was that, now?
Will our Athens city and county water supply be tested for chemicals, Tier Three or more chemicals, before the first deep shale test well is drilled?
That's a good question. You're talking to somebody from the city. You want to talk to county guy, white guys? Larry, do you want to say something? It's, it could be a county hall meeting. Give Larry a chance.
Do you want the mic? Come on, come on up, and the cameras will shoot you forever here.
There is some baseline testing in that county by the point of its center, and the ex water, which is one of the county water system, is doing some testing on their own. So, that's all on the work right now.
Doing and running information to the public, you do the things, you know, certainly work towards making public information so that the county--
I definitely know the one from University of Indiana. To my knowledge, anytime an organization, government entity has to do it, it becomes public knowledge. So, we'll, I know, we're doing testing all the time, baseline testing all the time. Whether, what, what we're looking for, of course, is what we have to look for. If you're looking for access, you know, if you're talking about benzene, we're testing for that testing. We're testing for organics, we're testing for volatile organics, we're testing for halogens. Where, you know, so we have a series of things we test. Again, if it shows up, we test the raw water as well as the processed. There's a consumer report, I think it's on our website still.
It's coming out soon.
It's, oh, yeah. I saw a requisition for, yeah, the requisition for the posting, I saw it last week, so I have to assume that's fully posted to everybody soon. Do you want to add anything? Who's wellhead protection?
We are. Just that the CCR is in the mail, it was mailed today, and that's, the Consumer Confidence Report is in the mail, it was mailed today, and lists all the different inputs that we test for. Oh! How'd you get your SIM fast? Keep it home.
Mine came today, too.
We usually post it as a PDF on our website, too. Our website right now is being reorganized. I shouldn't have, I should have brought that up because it's really rushed. People are living long to mid-August at this point. We've switched companies from one to the other to get an improved website up and running. The past consumer conference reports, the water reports have been linked to as a PDF in the download saved. So, that's where we are with that.
Could the city line create a database and compilation of all these different studies and then put it on the website in public consumption? Just as a public service?
If we could get a handle on it, I, you probably get Leacs, because I've seen that out there. I haven't seen the other ones, Baroque or Nelsonville for a matter. I have been talking to, just as mentioned passing, there's a Rick Hyman of the Buckeye Hills Development District. He's been very concerned. He's been one of the ones, I've gone to several meetings where he's talking about fracking well, gas well. One of the conversations I've had with him, and I know it's a topic here in that sense, but, is that he's, we're so fragmented in trying to get this information. When you're talking about a compilation, it's difficult, but the same, because we are different organizations, we don't have a fully functional, let's say, Hocky River Watership Committee or Organization. I mean, there's Hocky River Conservancy, there's, there's several organizations, but all are covering little bits and pieces. I know he's been trying to get us organized with other counties. He's been talking to Tuscaloosa County people, Carroll County people. And again, it's hard to get everybody to agree. There's a lot of people out there saying, yes, let's go for it, let's get the hell out, you know, let's get to the S.
You need somebody to write heard on it, basically.
Well, okay, you need to reach consensus. I mean, what can you agree on and what you can't agree on. I've gone up to Carroll County to see what's going on up there. Everything I heard up there was pretty, you know, they're in the honeymoon phase. Their dollar amounts going up because they're getting money from the real estate, the mineral rights, the state taxing the value of the mineral rights. They've got a lot of activity because people coming in, you know, doing all those deed searches. When I went up there two, three, three months ago, maybe almost four, they had 40 wells, horizontal wells. They talked about having 400 by the end of the year. That's where the impact's going to be. And again, you know, one of the things, discussions with the county auditor from Carroll County, his name was, that he would like, you know, we've talked about the severance tax a time, which obviously is not in the mix right now. He would like to see that come back to the counties that are actually feeling the impacts. That's not in, that's not in the score, too. And the conversation I had with him, he said, what would it take to do that? He said, well, you've got to get at least 20 counties that get together, push, you know, Columbus. It's going to have to be more than 20 counties, and that's not even close to a majority, and that's not even close to a minority, 20 out of 88. So, you have to look and say, how do you get consensus that everybody one agrees that they want the money, that they want the drilling or not? And I've been to a bunch of meetings, I've been all over the back and forth. You going to write a question before we ask another one?
Yeah. If it's a compilation of databases assembled in one place, one of the private property managers may feel like they've heard of infraction. They have the surrounding area database to go to to give them substantive baseline, when they have a problem, they have to take it to the industry, and they're fighting very, very deep pockets. So, as public institutions, county governments, city governments, compiling the databases and moving public information in one spot, and then we see where the cars fall when infractions or infractions occur, is basically what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying. Getting that numbers and making sure they're all consistent and that there's a providence of the testing from point A to point B is, again, once you go into law, you know, fighting this in a court, you're going to have to have everything to just more than a consumer report.
Does Brett Low make the law?
More or less. Good.
Okay, we'll go on to another one. We're going to change the topic a wee bit. What will it take to put a pedestrian crosswalk or crossing light which is manually triggered across East State Street at Watt Street?
Watt Street? Oh, okay, that's, yeah, way down there by Shannon.
Village Mary.
I'm just gronin'.
Do you want to answer that one?
This has been discussed in the past. We have looked at it. You, I don't know if the police chief wants to respond immediately or not, but at this time, what they tell me, it's not warranted. There's not enough traffic to do what we call a mid-block crossing there. Chief, did you want to add to that?
No, that's a salient point right there. Other than another traffic light at that intersection could have a negative impact on traffic on this section of East State Street. But, but really, the key deciding factor is that traffic study.
And I know it's also been brought forward in the past, trying to put a crosswalk or a light at Home Street, mostly because a lot of people get off the bus there and go from one side of the, you know, Bob Evans and back and forth. And so, this is the issue, is how to do, you know, when you start adding lights, there is impediments to blow, and then you have to coordinate all of them. So, a button control would make it difficult.
The, okay, the question is not the traffic, but the speed it goes, and I think you'd be putting in a speed measurement there, and pedestrians, and I think the traffic study seems to be disputed by anecdotal reports from people at the bakery who watched people trying to get across that constantly.
The traffic study is usually numbers of cars, not speed cars.
I know, and that's the point. It's not, that's not relevant to the problem there. If I may, the other possible, possible solution that we looked at is further down, further down the road. Yeah, I believe that would be the next, because of where the curb is and the way the roads are traveling. I don't like having the administration take a look at this again and maybe monitoring. I agree, there is a lot of traffic going into the Village Bakery and Dela Zone and--
Stroll or--
Right.
I'm just thinking of that, we're trying to fix this intersection right here and this leasing.
Oh, they have that intersection.
Yeah, okay, we're not going to go there. Go ahead.
Well, if you said the intersection right here, maybe you anticipated this question because we're going to talk about it right out here, that most of you probably came through. So, here's the question. Can the stoplight at the city pool be lengthened, or the red light stopping traffic on East State be more frequent? Children need more time to cross, explanation point, and cars have to wait a long time to enter East State.
Who wants to cover that? I'll get my service safety director to answer the question.
Hey, we really are trying with this intersection. Reintroduce the strobe lights for the reds and so that it's not, just recently hung the vehicles entering must, must, you know, yield to the pedestrians in the crosswalk. Andy swears it's timed perfectly and it doesn't take that long. Some of us up at the table say, wow, I've been waiting a real long time to get out of there. So, we'll look at that one again and look at increasing the duration that the walking pedestrians have to get across. I'm a swimmer, so I'm here daily.
It is a problem, but that's what we did when we wanted to buy lanes. We ended up increasing the speed. It's 25 miles out there, but you know better than I that that's not big, that's not happening. The alternative, of course, is to put a bunch of potholes there, a speed bump, pure choice.
We could do--
Potholes are better. They, you know, they become bird baths, you know, and there's no traffic. Okay.
Okay, we'll change the subject, if only because the subject can change for me. Now, the person formulated this didn't quite make it a question, but we can see what it would be. Question, new city motto. So, we'll say, do you suppose we could consider having a new city motto? M-O-T-T-O.
Moto, oh, what is our motto?
What is our motto?
The last time I was at this meeting was more a cognitive question and answer or present something, and not pretty much the day is controlling the environment, not to be critical.
Okay.
The format has changed.
Yes.
And I would like to discuss the idea, facetiously take that in advance, a new city motto incorporated with constant dishevelment of the downtown area, the lack of the--
Okay. First of all, the program we were putting together here, format we were putting together was not open mic. We're going to have an open mic after we get through the written questions, okay? So, that's your opportunity, okay? It's not fair to people who spend time getting ink smudged on them.
That's my misunderstanding.
Okay, yes.
It's changed.
Well, again, the concept is January 1, February 1 is for the open mic questions, June 1 is to respond, and with the idea that it's follow-up with written questions. It keeps us more on track. I don't know, I don't, I'm not big on branding, I don't know how to advertise because I don't know, you know?
If you're going to be addressing this one.
Well, we'll look into it. I don't know if you want to change--
Well, you did the other meeting, you have it before the--
Well, maybe you have a contest or something like that. I might even try to respond. At any rate, here's one that perhaps the mayor will direct at Larry Payne, but I was unable to save you the walk, but that's all right. Does the Athens County and southeastern Ohio community have any resources in place right now to help defray the costs of water testing and well testing?
Water testing? Do you have any money for that? Okay. Again, we're talking about the different water districts. Baroque, Leacs, they're all in that aquifer. Nelsonville. They all have to do testing after they get out of the aquifer area in terms of private wells, copper shingle planes, I don't even know, I know they're in the county, but I don't know where, where they're, how they do the testing. That's a good question. I don't think the money's there. Hopefully, we could get some from the, you know, one thing I do feel good about is that everybody's telling us that we don't have the shale. So, I'm hoping that will be the second wave, and they'll learn from the first. I hate to just be a do triage of northern Ohio, but the fact is that they, as they learn from their mistakes, we're maybe saving forward. On the other hand, one of the other aspects you want to have is going to have a new county engineer. Maybe this is the time to start talking about changes on that level. I know their purview is mostly roads and bridges. Maybe it should be more than that, at least with maintenance of those things, and other infrastructure, perhaps. I don't know the mandate of the county engineer entirely, except what I saw during the election cycle. So, I guess the answer is no for monies.
Thank you. Here's a thought-provoking question for us all, perhaps. In light of my being a neighbor to persons who are busy, to persons who are young and aged, to persons who are both able and disabled, to persons who are home and homeless, how can I be a good neighbor in my diverse neighborhood?
The best thing you can do about being a good neighbor is to listen. Put yourself in their shoes or in their place if they don't have shoes. Sometimes it's difficult, but you have to slow down and do that. My, my origins is New York, outside of New York City, Long Island, but I was born in Queens. You don't get to know the people there. You don't want to get to know the people there. They're just a function of what you want to, how you want to deal with them. In other words, if you go to the paper stand, you don't want to know the life story of the guy with the paper who sells you the paper, you just want the paper. Change, make the change, go back and forth. The luxury of a small town is that you know each other, you know, for good or ill, because we all have family members we can't stand. Okay, so I think this is one big happy community and family. There's ones you can get along with, some you can't. I know there's a lot out there. Some people say, well, there's always, you know, it's a, it's a range. You can send five minutes with this person before you just loathe them, or you can spend a half, three days. But the fact is, the best thing to do is listen, take two steps back and say, what am I assuming? You know, of them, both by their appearance, like who they are, who you think they are, and check that. Check the strongest assumption that you had and back off on it, and then listen. That's the best I can do. You know, I help my neighbor whenever possible. One of the questions you have, of course, is are you helping? That's, you know, I find one of the most satisfying things, if somebody has a car that needs a jump start, at least you know what you're doing and there's an outcome when the car jumps. On the other hand, I can step back and say, what were you saying? Maybe they're stealing that car. I'm just helping them commit a crime. So, I'm not going to ask them for the registration before I help them push the car out of a ditch or some, which I've done in the past, or jump started, say. But the idea is to say, okay, are you helping? Can you help your neighbor? And what are their needs? If that's that back, don't assume anything. That's all I can do. If anybody else has a better suggestion?
Come forward.
Thank you, Paul. Here's another one. Please explain the proposed crime watch program and how it would work. Are there any models from other cities? Proposed crime watch program.
I'm going to give that to the chief.
Oh, right. He's been dealing with that off and on.
You want me to come up here?
No, just go from where you are.
I don't have any information from other cities on a crime watch, and I'm happy about that, to be quite honest. I kind of like Athens crime watch to be unique and to be a ground-level kind of thing that we build in shape and form as we progress. It really depends on the numbers of people that we can get involved with the crime watch as to how we can fabricate it, so to speak, to be effective. Really, what we're looking for right now is just people to be more communicative, not only with the police department, but with one another. A good case in point would be the recent rash of graffiti and tagging that we've seen around town. This afternoon, we took no less than five reports of theft, grand theft, things like that. Those would all be crimes that we could have a positive impact on if we had a community-wide crime watch. And the reason I have asked for a community-wide crime watch is that it's my experience and study after study would show and tell you that when we provide selective enforcement or selective patrol in various areas of town, we're only successful in moving crime from that part of town where we're on patrol to a different part of town where we're not. But if we have a community-wide crime watch for the entire city, then my hope is that we would effectively curtail crime in the entire city and not just one section or the other. So, so really, yeah, there are other crime watches out there. The traditional crime watch of the 70s and early 80s is gone by the wayside. With the advent of technology, there are a lot of things that we could do and explore and maybe even be on the cutting edge in the area with, with things like that. So, no basis, just I want to know who's ready to get involved and what they're willing to do, and then we craft the program from that.
Let me add a few things. Previous question is getting to know your neighbor and communicating with your neighbor. One aspect of a crime watch is that you know what looks right in your neighborhood and what doesn't look right in your neighborhood. That means getting to know your neighbor, getting to know your neighbor. It's difficult. We've got 70% rental in the city. We've got a total turnover of youth every time. But the idea is to go out there, do some outreach, find out, find out who your neighbors
But the idea is to go out there, do some outreach, find out, find out who your neighbors are, how they work, how they think. Give them your number, have them, you get their numbers. Do you see something that doesn't look right? Don't hesitate. I look at our activity reports regularly. The fire department has a column called Good Intention Calls. It's not, you know, pulling a fire alarm innocently. They just say, "I saw a smoke. I reported it." You know? That's the same thing that should be pairing with the police. If you think something's wrong, if you think something doesn't look right, call the guys up. Worst case scenario, they come out and find out what's going on and tell you that, no, something. But really, again, how do you be a good neighbor? How do you be a good neighbor? It's part of it relating to each other. Go ahead, do you have another question?
Thank you, Paul. Here's one more. Please explain why the city and the county have not researched and have not found funding for the critical nature of baseline water testing. This should not be dependent upon the citizenry.
It occurs to me when we started talking about this that I think Rural Action was trying to put a water project together to do some baseline testing. If you talk about the city, we're doing baseline testing. That's obvious. That's what the report's all about. Whether we're doing with the objection, the object of, the point actually, the goal of actually testing our water in case it gets fracked or damaged, we're always concerned about that. When you start talking about doing private people's wells, I don't even know what percentage of people have private wells out there. I know there's whole sections of the county that do not have a water system out there because I know because I have some land on Burn Township, there's not a hydrant in Miles. So do I test Federal Creek? How do I test Federal Creek? Do I test it every day? How do I know it's good one day and not the other? How do I know it's getting done properly? All the other creeks out there, whether it's Mush Run or Coates Run over here, I think they actually did some testing in Coates Run, I saw that report. So when you say money for it, we spend money on it already. We have testing that's required, we have testing that we do extra. For the county to do it, that's, they cover, again, do they cover the water districts? Some of it. Do they do, is that their major goal? Probably not. How much can we test? How can, you know, we have injection wells in place right now, as many of you probably know because you're out there playing in the mud, I guess, or playing with the injection wells. The fact is, is that we have these things in place. I worry about how those are going to contaminate ourselves, but again, how we go stop it? Do we have control over it? Are we going to monitor it? I guess, again, it comes down to, if it's a crime watch, we have to educate ourselves on what those crimes look like and environmental crimes. So I guess that's the next thing to work on.
Incorporate with that, is there any way?
Did you write this down? Do you write this, give me a pen? Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Paul. Well, I have no more questions handed to me, and I think the table is blank, and so...
We have one of our mediators over here.
Okay, here's the man who set this up, so he's the only person who likes surrender this.
We didn't have an open mic scheduled, and the rules are different, so I'm going to go over those rules for the open mic. And I'm going to be the time keeper because our great time keeper has gone to another community and she's starting this. I'm going to give each speaker two minutes. I'm going to keep clock timed by that. I'll wave at you like this when you've got 15 seconds left, and I'll go like that when you've got time up. Once, I want to emphasize that one of the most disempowering things you can do is believe that the people behind us hold power. This community puts those people in place. If you can get 10 out of 10 people to go up to those people behind us and say, "We want this," they will do it. Speak out to the community, speak into the camera, out to the community, try to convince the community to get behind what you want. I'll be over there, I'll keep time for you all, and I'll let, I'll go back to Elswood. Oh, one other thing, once we have a person get up for two minutes, everyone has to go through a round before that person speaks again. Okay.
That sounds like that's going to work very, very well. Is that a question matter or we should speak? Okay, that's good. You're first. I think I'll invite you to speak from here, that way you're not standing in front of a public official.
I think we want him in front of the cameras, so...
Oh, okay. Where do you want them? Right here? Is that ideal? Okay, we'll put him there, and the public officials will simply, well, be behind him.
You're going to begin with your first?
Yeah.
People start with their names.
Great idea. Start with your name, and I guess where I need to go then, I find that there's nothing that concentrates one's ideas better than two minutes instead of several. So here we go. Oksana.
I'm Oksana Ruff, and I live in Burn Township, and I will take any opportunity to be before an audience to talk about fracking or not to frack in the Wayne National Forest. And I have a document that is signed on by the Ohio Environmental Council, NRDC, CR Club, Earth Justice, and I want to point out one part of this, that if you have not contacted the Wayne National Forest and Ann Carey, I encourage you within the next 10 days to do so because they are going to issue their statement about whether they think that the Wayne National Forest should authorize parcels for lease. One of the most important things to remember and emphasize to Ms. Carey is the fact that NEPA, under the National Environmental Policy Act, an environmental impact statement has not been done prior to the authorization of these parcels. We know that this is not legal. It is the main part of our protest. It is the words that need to be used by the citizens of this county to Ann Carey to tell her that if she makes a decision, anything other than not authorizing before an EIS, environmental impact statement, is against the law and that you as a citizen are more than concerned about this fact. And so it's not just the citizens around here that are concerned, it is an entire group of environmental councils and agencies that have signed on to this because of their concern about this national issue. So I encourage you to write Ann Carey, those of you who have a brochure, the numbers and the email address is on it, it's 753-0101, and it's Ann Carey. And if you want one. Thank you. Did I do two minutes?
You did five seconds.
That was a great job because, well, you know, we certainly need one sacrificial I am to show that the heads will roll F and so, but that's a, that's a great start. And here comes a second fellow.
Okay, and Lorraine in the back has copies of this letter, which is, was written by Buckeye Forest Council's attorney, Nathan Johnson, and the, let's see, the other thing I want to say is that Ann Carey will say in the press that an EIS can be done after leasing, and this letter discusses why that it's not okay, how that will not protect our water, that it is, that any leasing, that any EIS after leasing will be constrained by the contract. Ann Carey also says that because the Wayne owns so little of the land in Athens County and controls so little of their mineral resources, that they don't have to, or that it doesn't really, it's not going to make any difference, or it, they, it's such a small part of the impact that it's not significant. That is not the definition of significance according to NEPA. Obviously, fracking has significant impacts that were not addressed in their last plan in 2006. So a plan-level EIS must be done. If you didn't get brochure, see me afterwards for that. And also, just to note that there probably will have to be litigation because it is not likely that she is going to decide the way we think she must decide in order to protect our water. So we encourage people to keep that in mind and pressure her now, but expect that we will need to do fundraising after for, to protect our aquifer. Just one final comment, the, all the parcels that were up for sale went through abandoned mines where acid water will corrode both the steel and the cement within decades, and they are not evaluated for that when they are permitted by ODNR. Thank you.
Identify yourself.
Heather Cantino. And you can look on actfan, A-C-F-A-N dot org for more information on the Wayne.
Thank you. Come right out.
He wants the dog.
Pardon?
He'd like the dog.
Only she can say his name.
I thought you were going to speak, but either way, you can be, your folks first.
Thank you, thank you. My name's Scott Bagley, I live across the street. And is it appropriate to ask questions again of the folks here? Okay, I just wanted to...
Would you stand behind the mic so that the camera can...
A few years ago, I had the opportunity to go to Europe, and over there, they, of course, they're very concerned about where their energy is coming from. I was in Austria specifically, and they have energy disruptions due to like the Russians cutting off, or the Ukrainians cutting off gas to Europe, because of course, they're also, like, we are highly dependent on natural gas for our heat. I think it's probably the predominant source of heat, heating, or energy source for our heat here in Athens. So I was just, I had a conversation with Paul Loeb a few years ago, I think, about some ideas, and I was just kind of curious if the city has a plan in place to address kind of our energy future in terms of not production, like we've talked about through most of this meeting, but about use in terms of, and I know we've done some solar installations, some other things like that. Mayor Wile talked a lot about conservation, which of course is the first place to start. Just kind of curious, you know, what are we going to do as a city for the future? You know, are we just going to continue to coast along like we are, try to conserve as we can? Or, you know, what are some other ideas that we can address? And will the commission that's being developed look at some of this stuff?
Since I was informed of a question, again, we've been pursuing energy conservation at a city level with our structures from perfection for at least four years now. One of the first things I got in when I got into office, I was actually asked to go to the Paw Paw Festival and talk about transition cities. You get a chance, look it up. It really has, based on the premise of peak oil and the concept of actually building resiliency within our community locally. Those are the main two mainstays of what you're trying to see there. This includes food and energy and how we're going to deal with it. Again, we are energy junkies. We consume much more than whatever we're going to produce on our own. We did try and put together some kind of revolving loan fund for solar panels. It did not take off because we never got the seed money for it. We applied for some. You have organizations there that are doing energy conservation, whether it's COAD, weatherization, HAPCAP has programs to do that, that's a conservation side. So there are issues and things that could be done, but really, life, many of the things that are large and require, they require everybody to do something. They require all of us to be thinking in those terms, whether it's the vehicles we use, or the food we buy, or the light switches we don't turn off when we need to. There's, well, some information on how to conserve whenever possible. We just have to educate ourselves on that.
In addition, just today, when I had, we had our MOU work group meeting with Ohio University, we discussed a possible implementation of, what do you call it, electric parking spots? And the co-generation inquiry was made about the city to work with Ohio University on their new heating plant and whether or not we can get a line run and tap into that for our wastewater treatment plant and also our water treatment.
Thanks, Paula. Another question? All right. You haven't spoken yet, ma'am, so the four jurors, but you have spoken.
Say your name, and you want to read something I say?
Okay, my name is Celia Wetzel, and I'm an Athens County resident, taxpayer, and landlord. I'm here to share suggestions regarding steps my community members can take to protect themselves and their property. I've read the local news that our first deep shale test well seems to be imminent. There are plenty more folks out there with information other than myself. I would never suggest I have all the answers, but I do feel a responsibility to my friends and neighbors and the people who make this community great, to help this community, keep this community a happy and healthy and prosperous community. I'm going to skip about the history of why I think I know anything about fracking. It's been over a six-month period, but one thing I will say is, I've listened to people who are sick right now from the chemicals used in this industry that poison their water. And, you know, if you think that's baloney and you don't believe me, go to YouTube and watch Jamie Frederick. She lives outside Downest Town, Ohio, and she testified at the Don't Frack Ohio rally this past June. I listened to her. So it's real. This isn't, this isn't blown out of proportion, it's really happening. So if this test well should look lucrative, you know, what's going to happen? One possibility is it could be an injection well. If it does look lucrative for oil and gas, I would think it's possible that it could become horizontal. I don't see any legal documents saying it's not going to be horizontal, even though the owners, I think, have said they don't intend to do that. So anyway, here's some things you've got to do if you live near this well. You've got to test your water. You've got to do it, you've got to do it, you've got to do it before they touch ground there. You have to have the QC data from your testing, or they can say, "Hmm, I don't think those test results are valid." There's a lot of information, ask people on how to get this done, document your property, every single bit of it, photograph it, videograph it, and talk to me later, I can tell you the rest of my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Four jurors.
I don't think I can turn my back on anybody.
Well, you have to, in this democracy, there's people who elect these officials, so we address them, and we just stand behind the podium.
So I get to turn my back on people.
Well, that's, that's the way it goes.
First, I'd like to offer a disclaimer and a disclaimer. I am fondly and greatly appreciate what you've been...
I'd like you to state the name first.
My name's Todd Swearingen. I'd like to offer the disclaimer and the disclaimer. I finally appreciate what you guys go through as city officials, the hell, and all the good intentions, just sitting here for an hour and a half, or an hour and 20 minutes. It's obvious what you have to deal with, and a 30-second sound bite could be a year's worth of work. So don't take anything that I have to say in a negative fashion. Second, as far as the water quality test, the residents in the city or the county being able to require a water quality test with the city or the county's assistance, is there any way the city or the county and/or can use their buying power to bring in water testers and do the water testing in bulk and achieve a wholesale or discount rate? Now, is that illegal? Is that beyond what you're limited to do as a city? But it's a lot cheaper for a guy to come in and do 15 tests in a week than it is for him to do 15 tests over 15 weeks. It reduces his time, travel, his equipment expense, pulling stuff in and out of trucks, et cetera. So will the city and the county be willing to contribute to that? Third, in the same vein, contribution, working together, community effort. We have the downtown area, and we are a transient community. Essentially, downtown is a theme park and has been for since World War II or beyond. Since morals changed and partying, puke became the standard. Whether it's bubble gum, whether it's hot dog wrappers that have been sitting underneath trash baskets for six weeks until somebody pressure washes them from underneath, whether it's graffiti, whatever it might be, the downtown area is an attraction, both to residents and the people who come in for Brew Week, for Alumni Week, whatever. If I was an alumni from Ohio University, I would sure as heck like to come in and remember fondly my years at OU while I'm drinking a beer of Jacky O's or Casa and say, "God, this is just like I remember." Or I could look down below my feet and see thousands of pieces of bubble gum or whatnot, and all the demarcations and the marks and whatnot, and I could be displeased. So I'm asking that the city and the county could work with, the city and the county could work with Paul Farnwell and residents and everybody else, creating environments where this can be cost-effective for everybody, rather than creating more costs for individuals and misallocating the cost amongst certain individuals.
You're welcome to respond or digest, your choice, sir. It's a tough one. You may speak or not as you choose, or you can simply spend six months digesting it and report back.
I'm hearing a couple of things. First of all, the high-volume water testing. We do a lot of our water testing in-house, but I don't know if we cover all the particular tests that need to be done for a baseline fracking. We jot those out. I also know that we also do outside testing for some other entities. So I'm aware that there is some, you know, mix that goes on. In terms of volume stuff, that'd be a good question. Some of them don't really go, I did a stint doing water testing many years ago, I got a Bachelor of Chemistry, and I spent, I spent actually two months doing, decided that it wasn't what I wanted to do and that they weren't doing it properly, okay? It was a testing lab that I could do it on a week, a prayer not get certified. And I basically wrote myself out of job because... And I basically wrote myself out of job because I said, you need an atomic absorptive spectrometer, you need this, you need this, you need this. And they said, well, can't you just do it, you know, just sign off on it? And it's like, no.
Especially if it's been a holdup in court.
Precisely. You actually have to get certified. You have to get some outside testing, you have to get independent standards, you have to go and fall within a range of that. So it's not an easy thing. The price for metal at that time was, this is 1981, it was $15 for metal that you tested. So if you're testing cadmium, one test, you're testing the lead. So you start to think of all the metals that you have to work with. And that's just the, you know, the positive ions. We're not even talking about the negative ions. The downtown area, just to cover that, we have an Uptown Business Association. They're not all on the same page. They do not want everything at the same time. They have different ideas, what they need to do. They're not even representing everybody up Court Street, down Court Street. City code requires people to keep their sidewalk clean. We do not go out in the neighborhoods and clean people's sidewalks. These business people should have at least the wherewithal and pride to do it themselves. I've tasked the litter patrol officer to actually be going up downtown and getting them to clean it up. It's good to say yes as redundancy. I know Mr. Cornwell did a good job. He did it, there's actually people who do it. I know Bronies does it regularly. I know that the university does it regularly. I know Mr. Cornwell does it regularly. I see the power washers out there. I see other ones that are totally trashed out and couldn't care less. I was apprehensive about putting the benches in, because those actually do pick up litter quite easily. I know we also do diversion programs to get the litter, to clean up those waste paper baskets regularly. When we have someone doing community service, usually because of underage drinking or something like that. So there's a, there is a cycle going on. Whether we can do it enough? You know, I used, I have friends, I know, some of the people in this audience I know regularly pick up litter. They don't go walks, they hang bags, they pick up litter. You know, I used to do that. Then I realized I can spend the rest of my life doing that. There's seven billion people out there throwing things over their shoulder if they don't know better. I do my job. I don't put it down and have to start with. That's as, that's as far as I have. I'm halfway through my life at least, you know? I'm lucky I live enough to 120,000, less than halfway, okay? But right now, the best we can do is we can, we can push the property owners on Court Street, as you say, the Disneyland, to do as best they can. But even then, you're talking about different populations. You're talking, you're talking about, you know, retailers who want a clean place. You're talking about the bars who never see it during daylight and don't care. And you're talking about it just takes one person not paying attention, one person intoxicated, not even thinking what they're doing. We have tried keeping trees up there. We've got literally a million variables. How can a group of concerned citizens and city representatives get together, create a program that works, disenchant a few, benefits to many, and resolves a problem, and then go away with the bonuses for 13 years that I've been here? I know it's a small problem compared to the rest of the city's issues. Yes. But, but it is a visual, if somebody sees a junky shop when they walk in, they're going to think, the county is a former county. If somebody sees a messy bedroom when they walk in, or a messy house, and food on the counter, it's a week old, they're going to think, good Lord, get me out of here. But, but, okay, so what does the businessman think? They should be aware of this. They should, they should know better already. I can't, my job is not to educate them or bring them on the same page. They all have different ideas of what, the same thing with the historic preservation ordinance we're putting together. What, at what time point do you say this is historically accurate? What, what do you want? Do you want the horse and buggy on the street? Do you want the 50's diner? You know, do you want that, you know, what's historic preservation? And at what time, at what point in time do you just lock it in? You know, do we, you know, these are the issues right there. These are questions that, they're not easily resolved. Again, as long as the Chamber of Commerce is always involved in this, the Office of Chamber of Commerce, it is the Uptown Business Association. They're the ones who put on the sidewalk sales, who have the, you know, they do, you know, they do things to promote themselves. What they have to do is realize that the cleanliness uptown is also a promotional element. Okay?
All agree?
I just wanted to say something.
Come on up.
Just a minute now, you're second in line.
In relation to what he was speaking of...
I didn't know your name.
Okay, okay. I'm Francine Charles. And I'm thinking, in relation to what you were just speaking of, if in fact I put my trash out on the street on, my trash man, come on, mind this. If I put my trash out on Wednesday, put more out on the street on Thursday, put more out on the street on Friday, put more out on the street on Saturday, somebody is going to call and report me. Now, if I have to clean up mine, then it seems to me that the business owners need to have to clean up what is in front of them, in front of their business. If they care about their business, or if they see somebody littering, try to get their idea or something, and then have them find, have them have to pay for it. So it seems to be a solution to the problem.
Thank you.
Thanks Francine. Alice here.
Hi Alice.
What? Here, I'll bring this to you. You've got to have the microphone, otherwise they won't hear you. All of us today are worrying about financial supply. We're talking cities, state, individuals, organizations of different kinds. Talking at your perspective in the city and the world around you. Are you going to survive another year or two?
I don't know. Depends on the Mayan calendar or something, I guess. I have no answer for that.
Okay.
Actually, if you talk to the, the street crew, they say it's been around 200-plus years, and it's hard to break. But then, of course, they get overtime where it does break, so. But they do a good job, that's the thing. You have to look and say, we do okay. So I think they'll survive.
Thank you Paula. I'll hand this to you right here, so that you'll be on the camera for...
Two minutes.
Hi, this is Bob Lynchers. I am a citizen and had been for 50 years of Athens County. I do not at this time live in the city. I live on a farm out in greater metropolitan South Kananville. And so I come at this whole problem of fracking and all of that, and the water supply and everything, from several points of view. Yes, I lived in the city for a long time. Yes, I'm very interested in the well-being of the city from a number of points of view. But here's what I think. People keep coming to the city to solve problems that are larger than the city can solve. The city can be a part of the solution. But it seems to me that there's an expectation that somehow that the city's going to be able to solve it, when we all know that the city can't solve it by itself. The city cannot even have an influence if you don't get the county behind it, how you think about it. And if the county isn't united and works with other counties to have influence at the state legislature. So I keep saying to myself, this seems to be a dog chasing its tail around. I think that, and here's my question. Those of you who are so vitally interested and passionate about this, and I believe that many of you are, and correctly so, can you not work together and form a group that is at least county-wide and take the issue to all the forces in the county and the various things? Because I think it's, it's sticking your head in the sand to go to city council and say, solve this for us.
Thank you. You've got that question stated just within the two-minute. Thanks. Anybody else have a question and comment? Come right on up. I'll send this over here, so you stand and turn the camera.
Hi, Lorraine McCosker, an Athens resident. I'd like to address the issue around Wayne again. I just would like to, to just share with you that the National Environmental Policy Act was a piece of legislation that was passed about 1970 under the Nixon administration because the public pushed it. They, it was mandated that we have an environmental policy act. And the National Forest Service, by virtue of that, is to follow that. They're a federal agency, and they are to follow this National Environmental Policy Act. They did a management plan in 2006, and they indicated that there would be some oil and gas well lands available, but there weren't, there was no interest in that. What we've seen in the past year and a half is there are over 398,000 acres in the eastern United States that are coming under pressure from the oil and gas industry to be leased by the Bureau of Land Management. We're just one little part of it. This is a critical issue. Also mandated, the Forest Service is to look at climate. And this is the big elephant in the room. We're never addressing climate change and the climate crisis that we're facing. So it's absolutely critical that the Forest, Wayne National Forest Supervisor and her regional district, and her regional forester, address this. And I encourage everyone to contact her. One other thing is that people that did go to visit with her, someone learned that there's going to be an open house for the Bureau of Land Management and ODNR in July, and we plan to protest at that time.
Perfect, hi. Any other question? Come right on up. Your name, if you will, and write it down.
My name is Andrea Horsh, and I'm the Director of Caregiving with Good Works. I came here today to listen to the response of city officials to various meetings where I've spoken previously about the issue of the sheer numbers of people that were turning away from the Timothy House this year because of lack of space. So I just come up again today to bring this up publicly. I need to tell you all that as of this afternoon, we've turned away 107 people so far in 2012, sheerly because we do not have room to accommodate them at the Timothy House. So the levees have broken, and our phones are flooded with these requests. And these are people who are not here today. They're people who have big needs. There are parents who have kids, and there are veterans, and there are people with disabilities who are camping, or who are staying in places where they don't feel safe, or who are sleeping in cars, or sleeping under bridges. So I'm just here today to remind you of them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come right on up, sir. I'm just about ready to wrap it up, but now I see a hand. And so, your name and the floor is yours.
John Nelson, I'm actually a resident of Claustre these days, and Athens is too expensive for me. Of course, Stroudron State Park and associated preserved lands extensively border the city, so they're a pretty integral part of what Athens is about. I am active in a group called the Friends of Stroudron State Park, and we are embarking on two programs to protect Stroudron. One is a water quality monitoring program. One is a historical and arithological assessment. And we want to make sure that Stroudron is as protected from whatever outside depredations is possible. And these are very expensive programs, so we could really use contributions. Or it's worth our P.O.B.O.S. 514 Athens. And of course, I'm also with the Athens Conservancy, and we have already directly protected another 125 acres adjacent to the state park, and indirectly protected another 250 acres. So, and we would do more if we had the money. So, that's it.
Thank you, John. Okay, maybe it's time to wrap up for the evening. And I can't help thinking and watching this and being participant in this. Okay, all right, come on up. But Bill, I, I, you've already had one opportunity.
We'd have more if there was time. Just want to mention a couple of things. Lorraine mentioned climate impacts. Specifically, shale gas has greenhouse gas emissions 70 times as dangerous as carbon dioxide for greenhouse gas effects because of methane's highly potent emissions over a 20-year time period. Also, recent news documents mortgages denied for drilling on neighbors' property, which of course is an issue when we talk about public lands as well as private lands. And also 23 tons of volatile organic compounds per well are admitted that are totally unregulated by Ohio law. Anne Carey will say that Ohio law will protect, which it will not, and it is not one of the strongest in the nation. It doesn't require disclosed, full disclosure of chemicals or testing of radioactivity or chemicals going into injection wells, and doesn't require monitoring. So when she says, or when the ODNR chief says, or PR person says that there's been no contamination, it's because there's no monitoring. So of course, there's been no contamination found. Also this week, a $1.6 million settlement by Chesapeake was announced for well water contamination in Pennsylvania. So don't let anyone tell you that there's been no water contamination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, shall we? Now, no, this is a basically city-sponsored thing, and, you know, I don't want to drag this on forever. I don't want to cut it off. At the same time, Bob Winter's made the observation that some of the topics we're bringing up cannot be solved within City Hall. Come right on up. Who else would like to speak this evening? Anybody else? Okay, in that case, we will cut it off. You have the last speaker.
Lorraine McCosker again. I do want to just comment that today there was an action in Albany. In, in Athens County, we have four injection wells. What an injection well is, it's a well that accepts waste from fracking and is injected into the ground. So Ohio does not have primacy, meaning we do not have control over that. And we are currently accepting waste from New York, maybe not New York, but New Jersey just banned it, Pennsylvania, and other states, West Virginia. Apparently, there, there has been a lot of, a lot of waste coming into our county. I was, this past fall, I was at a meeting with the person who administers this, and I asked him how much waste was coming in. And at that time, he told me, his name is Tom Tomastic at ODNR, he said 133,000 barrels of waste per day. And a barrel has 42 gallons in it. So please look for that in the newspaper. There was an arrest, and it was quite a show. And I think that it's very important that we address it. We do not know where this material goes once it's injected.
Okay, can I? I assume that's the last, last person wants to speak. A couple of things. As Bob said, a lot of these things are beyond the scope of the city. But at the same time, it proves us to get educated of the issues, what's going on, and organize. As I say, I may be top gun in the city as mayor, but the fact is, is I know there's Facebook, No Frack Ohio, there's organizations that are out there besides Facebook. There's people who try and organize these things. One thing I was hoping to get information was, I mentioned that at the last meeting, that fellow up in Nelsonville was actually talking about trying to put a shelter to get it. Did anybody get any information on that? Does anybody know? Does anybody know anything about what happened to that? I'm looking to the Good Works people. Does anybody know? I'm asking for information. I'm not, you know, being political here, but the fact is, it sounded like an offer that I've...
He has my number, but he said he works all the time. So it did not turn out to be much of an offer.
I see, okay. So, did you get his number? Did you call him? Okay, just wondering. Again, I just, you know, this is somebody came forward with a possible solution, or at least an aspect of it. Some of the other things that we, we're looking at, of course, is trying to work with the county, trying to extend our, our wastewater sewer, sanitary sewer system outside the city limits. I've been in the conversation for a couple of years now, mostly towards the Westbrook Economic Development. The other one, in terms of countywide, of course, is trying to get transportation, bus transportation there. This is a conversation with Lance Rep, who's been building, coordinating with HACCAP. I suggested here, this, the reason why I mentioned, that's one of the needs, as you know and I know, for, for jobs, for shelter outside of the city limits. I mean, it's short of, you know, depreciating property, the land in the city, or expanding the footprint. I mean, that would be a solution. So I asked to get point A, point B in the city. The next one is public transportation. We've handed over our, both the Go Bus and our city transportation over to the administration of HACCAP, because I think they've got a better handle on it. I've been very impressed with Go Bus, with the exception of running into cars and so on. But at the same time, you know, the take is, is we want to make a viable city. I think it requires public transit, and not about to build subways. Somebody suggested trolleys to me, but I don't think we can lay enough track right now to do that. You know, again, we're looking at solutions to how to make a city and a community better, and how to regenerate a regional entity and community. I mean, that's how we expand it. And that's all that we mentioned. And I'd like to thank the Leeway voters for doing their, their time here, as well as my staff. Thank you for all coming today. I'll leave it to you now.
One thing I'll say, I want to thank you for coming, but I think this meeting with the elected official, the mayor, and his staff here, inviting comments from us, and offering us an open microphone, answering our questions from last winter, is basically unique among governments in this world, isn't it? You have to go a long way. We could march many and many a mile throughout the world and throughout the US and not find anything like this. So thanks all of you for participating. And thank you in particular Mayor Wile and your staff for making this open meeting possible. See you the next Town Hall meeting. Have a good evening.